Call this meeting to order Tuesday, June 15th, 2021, 7:00 PM. City of Somerton Regular Council Meeting. Can we please stand with the Pledge of Allegiance? Vice Mayor, can you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and evergreen.
Rocka.
Mayor Gerardo Naya.
Present.
Vice Mayor Juan Castillo.
Present.
Councilmember Carlos Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilmember Jesus Roldán.
Present.
Councilmember Luis Galindo.
Present.
Councilmember Marta Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilmember Miguel Vialpando.
Present.
Mayor, have a quorum.
Thank you. First of all, I want to recognize several elected officials, dignitaries are in the present. We have City of San Luis Councilmember Matías Rosales. Also, Yuma County Supervisor Martin Porches. Chairwoman Sherwin Cordova. And if somebody else is here, I haven't met you, so. Welcome. Okay, we have called to the public. Anybody from the public wishing to address council?
Matías Rosales.
Please state your name and address.
Sure, thank you. I'm Matías Rosales, I was Realtor One Group Gateway, 128 West 32nd Street, Yuma, Arizona. I'm just here on behalf of a client of mine, 24/7 Fitness, just to introduce ourselves to the council and inform you that we did submit a proposal for one of your lots at the new development, and we're proud to see the city grow and bring this type of development to the community. 24/7 has been here in the city for several years already, and we look forward to continue the growth for the community. So they wanted me to come and present myself and let you guys know we're available for any questions or anything you guys may have in regards to our proposal.
Okay.
Thank you.
Remind council, this is Matías Rosales, not council member. Matías Rosales. Anybody else from the council, from the public wishing to address council?
Ian Haley.
Good evening, Ryan Hale, 13478 South Tier Bonita Boulevard, Yuma, Arizona. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, for your consideration in making Fourth Avenue Gym a part of the Somerton community. We've been working with Hector the last couple of months on your development, and we're really excited about the possibility of bringing the gym to the Somerton community. This will be our third facility, and we'd love to build a legacy in the city of Somerton as we have in Yuma over the last 40 years. I'm just going to point out a few things why I feel, I know we have some competition on this, so a few reasons why I think we're a better decision, for lack of other words, for the city of Somerton. My dad, my brother and I have taken our experience of being in the fitness industry since 1981, and we built what we see as a complete facility in our other two in Yuma. We're right up there with some of the top gyms in the nation as far as the scope and breadth of the equipment we put in there. We don't skimp on anything. This facility here would be just the same as, for some of you have seen our new facility in the foothills, it'd be just the same as that, same size, everything. So we're gonna, we're gonna go all out on this one as well. We employ around 20 employees, and at any given time, our gym has a starting wage of $13 and up. We're staffed 24/7, so we have, always have a staff member on site. This means the city's Somerton residents have a safe, healthy place to exercise almost any time all year long. This also would be an additional 20 jobs in which Somerton residents can make and spend their money right at home. If you're not aware, in the gym industry, memberships are not subjected to sales tax, but all retail sales are. Many gyms these days stay away from selling retail items because it takes more labor for a smaller return. At Fourth Avenue Gym, we sell a lot of retail items, clothing, supplements, drinks. So all of these retail items are subject to sales tax, which would benefit the city of Somerton. We'd be happy to provide you guys figures if you wanted that at another point. And finally, we're looking forward to support, supporting Somerton High School Athletics through Fourth Avenue Gym Foundation my brother created. As of this date, we've donated over $100,000 in three years to Yuma High Schools. We love our home and where we're from, and we want to see kids in Yuma County have the same opportunities that other kids do. So we can't wait to build that relationship with Somerton High School as well. To wrap it up, we've been doing this for many years. It's our life, and we look forward to being part of the Somerton community.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public wishing to address council? Okay, we have two proclamations. We have the, the first one is celebrating our anniversary with the Somerton Cocopo Fire Department, of our partnership with our, with the Cocopo Tribe. It's been 20 years, and I'm sure we can all agree that it's been a great partnership for both communities. That, you know, shows that when we work together and, and put our funds together, we can build a top-of-the-line, well-equipped fire department. I'm gonna read the proclamation. Whereas on June 19th, 2001, the last signature necessary was penned creating an intergovernmental agreement forming the Somerton Cocopo Fire Department. And whereas the Cocopo Tribe and the city of Somerton demonstrated the brave and necessary commitment to create a full-fledged professional fire department. And whereas the Cocopo Tribe and the city of Somerton proved to be visionaries in providing their citizens with improved professional fire and emergency medical services. And whereas the city of Somerton and the Cocopo Tribe demonstrated their strong ties and loyalty to one another. Now therefore, I, Gerardo Naya, of the city of Somerton, hereby proclaim June 19th, 2021, as the 20th anniversary of the Somerton Cocopo Fire Department, and urging its citizens to reflect upon this historic intergovernmental agreement, which demonstrates our loyal ties as stewards for the care of all who travel our byways and communities. Chairwoman and members.
Just to say, on behalf of the Cocopo Tribe, we are honored, excuse me, to be a part of this, to see Chief De Anda here, councilmembers, and many of you that are new. But 20 years ago, as you said, there was a vision, and it was really great, the foresight that was there that led us to where we are today. And hopefully, the vision that we have will continue on. In 20 years from now, someone else will be standing here, and it'll be a proclamation for 40 years, and we will continue. So we thank the city of Somerton. As I left my house, our ballpark was on fire, so I said, I better go over there and get this and say, hey, we're a part of the fire department. So thank you. The firefighters are out there right now. So thank you so much to the city of Somerton. This is our home, this is my home from birth, and I'm proud of our relationship and look to continue the relationship with the city and with the tribe. Thank you on behalf of the Cocopo Tribe.
Chief, I know you want to say something.
Wow. That's a first.
World Elder Abuse Awareness Day.
On June 19th, we'll be celebrating our 20th anniversary, uniting the Somerton Fire Department with the Cocopo Fire Department. And because of this, we're able to provide a full range of services, both to our Cocopo people and to the citizens of Somerton also.
In the next 20 years, I would like for the community to realize this unique partnership that we have and how it benefits both communities.
The city of Somerton and Cocopo Tribe began a relationship, partnership, 20 years ago. And that relationship has blossomed, bloomed, and continues to grow every year. It has been beneficial to all of our membership and to the city of Somerton, and we look forward to another 20, and then again, another 20 years after that, that will only serve to help all of our communities. And that's why we're here today, is to make sure that all of our communities are safe.
Now we have a second proclamation, World Elder Abuse Awareness Day. Whereas older adults deserve to be treated with respect and dignity to enable them to serve as leaders, mentors, volunteers, and vital participating members of our communities. Whereas in 2006, the International Network for the Prevention of Elder Abuse and Support of the United Nations International Plan of Action proclaimed a day to recognize the significance of elder abuse as a public health and human rights issue. And whereas in 2021 marks the first annual World Elder Abuse Awareness Day, its recognition will promote a better understanding of abuse and neglect of older adults. And whereas the National Center on Elder Abuse and the city of Somerton recognize the importance of taking action to raise awareness, prevent and address elder abuse. And whereas, as our population lives longer, we are presented with an opportunity to think about our collective needs and future as a nation. And whereas ageism and social isolation are major causes of elder abuse in the United States. And whereas recognizing that it is up to us, all of us, to ensure the proper social structures exist so people can retain community and societal connections, reducing the likelihood of abuse. And whereas preventing abuse of older adults through maintaining and improving social supports like senior centers, human services, and transportation will allow everyone to continue to live as independently as possible and contribute to the life and vibrancy of our communities. And whereas where there is justice, there can be no abuse. Therefore, NCA urges all people to restore justice by honoring older adults. Whereas join us in our engaging and empowering movement and putting an end to abuse. Now therefore, I, Gerardo Naya, Mayor of the city of Somerton, do hereby proclaim June 15th, 2021, as World Elder Abuse Awareness Day in Somerton, Arizona, and encourage all of our communities to recognize and celebrate older adults and their ongoing contributions to the success and vitality of our country. Francisco from our Somerton Senior Center, and maybe someone else. We have one item in consent agenda. It's approval of application for extension of premises, patio permit to the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control on behalf of A535 Ball Bar and Grill with a pride event on June 26th, 2021. Does any member of council want to remove this item from consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Some mayor. A motion by Councilmember Gonzalez.
Second mayor.
Second by Councilmember Galindo, others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have two presentations. The first one is a presentation by the Retail Coach Company on the recruiting efforts done during the last months.
I'm mayor and council.
Councilmembers, we have Austin Farmer from the Retail Coach. Andrea should be online. Gibson, are you ready?
I am, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. I'm mayor and council, thanks for having me. I know it's, it's a busy meeting tonight, so I'll keep it quick, but just wanted to give you an update on our retail recruitment efforts for the city, give you a quick status check on where we're at in that process. Last time I was in front of the council, had a request for some of the specific feedback that we're getting from retailers and restaurants and developers about the community. So I've included some of that feedback that we've seen, and we'll talk quickly about where we're going from here in terms of what the next three to four months look like for our recruitment schedule. So currently, with our retail recruitment activity, we're actively communicating with just over 35 different retailers, restaurants, and retail developers. And we're adding additional prospects based on expansion plans and regional presence of those retailers. I think we're at a good point, certainly over the last year and a half, where most retailers, restaurants, developers are all coming out of COVID. So most of the conversations that we're having with retail brokers and site selectors and these corporate real estate teams, you know, we keep hearing the words "post-COVID" a lot, and so we're starting to see a lot of those expansion plans become more clear. So we're starting to get a lot of good momentum and have a really good conversations with a lot of those prospects that are on our list. One of the early pieces of feedback that we got from one of our first council meetings too was that we didn't just want to focus on a lot of the large national brands that either Hector has talked to in the past, or that may kind of look over Somerton as they're looking at certain markets. So we've tried to balance that mix with some local and regional options as well. So we're reaching out to some smaller regional grocery store chains, restaurants, and some smaller mom-and-pop type stores and restaurants as well as we're doing that recruitment. Most recently, in May, we were at an ICSC event, that's the International Council of Shopping Centers. They typically hold a, what they call the Recon Retail Conference in Las Vegas every year in May. It's the largest real estate conference in the world, and there are tens of thousands of people that are out there, and we represent the city at those types of events. This year, because of COVID, that May event was actually digital. And so we had meetings, May 26th through the 28th, where we were able to get online and have a lot of those deal-making conversations with these site selectors, real estate teams, brokers, and really those retailers and restaurants. So I had some really good conversations that came from that, got to hear some expansion plans, and really what people are looking to do regionally, and I think pushed the ball forward with a couple of retailers and restaurants that we've been trying to get to the city. Currently where we stand, 25 of those 35-plus retailers and restaurants are currently reviewing the market data. So all the custom data we put together for the city using that GPS data, the cellphone data, all of those consumer analytics, the demographics for the community. We've also sent them site profiles for available sites in town, whether that's, you know, the former City Hall site or specific sites that are available and ready for retailers to move into, as well as developable land. Certainly, when you look at the west side of the city, where you're looking at some of that new development with the new school, so really focused on where we can drive interest with those retailers and really where we can get them into the community, whether it's an available site or a piece of property that we can come in and develop. And we're actually currently working with a restaurant brand who's interested in being in the community, but doesn't currently have an active franchisee that's in the Somerton market or that owns the Somerton market. So we're working with them to identify potential franchisees who could bring the concept to the city. And we're ultimately doing that two ways, through having them push all of the data in the site profiles for the community out to their larger developer network and their franchisee network, to see if there's anyone who's already a franchisee that would like to pick up the market. And then have had some conversations with Hector as well about, you know, where's there some opportunity to find potential local franchisees or business owners or entrepreneurs that may be interested in being able to come in and fill that role. So starting to see some, some good momentum there just in terms of our activity and our ongoing recruitment. One thing I'll add that we'll see on the last slide in a minute though, is, you know, we, we didn't feel comfortable with our contract ending at the end of July or in August because COVID was such a setback. So what we're voluntarily doing is we're, we're gonna extend our contract at no charge through at least the end of July, if not through the end of August, just to make sure that we're not missing any momentum and that we're having these good conversations as these retailers and restaurants are starting to come out of COVID. I think by the, the end of that July or end of August timeframe, I think we'll see a lot of really good movement, and we'll, we'll keep seeing that momentum that, that we're seeing coming out of COVID. So we, you know, we value the relationship with the city. We didn't just want to say, oh, our contract's up, we're, we're done talking to the retailers, or, you know, here you go, Hector, good luck. So we're, we're gonna keep pushing for that through the end of at least July, if not the end of August. And quite honestly, if we're getting good feedback and good momentum, you know, we'll probably carry a few weeks over and might even end up going into September. To, to, to talk real quick about this slide, there's, you should see a slide in front of you that says, what's preventing retailers and restaurants from coming to Somerton? I put this together for, just for the councils as a whole. One of the pieces of feedback and really the questions that we've gotten from the council is, you know, what specifically is keeping people from coming to the market? This is, is a short slide, we have some other bullet points we can share with you later that we're kind of working on as we get in and we start to see as that feedback comes back in from retailers and restaurants. These, I would say, are the two biggest factors right now that are keeping these retailers and restaurants out of the community. The first one is market size and population density. You're at a disadvantage being in the Yuma MSA. You know, you've got a larger population base and more densely populated residential and urban developments just down the road that hurts you a little bit. There's a lot of retailers that have come back and said, hey, we, we like, we like the community, we think there could be some potential there in a few years, but they just don't have the, the population density that we need right now. There's an example, a couple of quotes up there that we've heard some, from some grocery store chains. The first one, they, they came back and said, you know, we're looking at highly populated suburban markets before entering smaller markets. We can revisit in 2021 as plans for the market evolve. So that's not necessarily a bad sign, but it is a sign that, you know, when, when people are looking at certain markets, and certainly when they're looking at the Yuma region and the Yuma market, and if they haven't entered before, a lot of times they are gonna gravitate towards Yuma before Somerton. And what we're trying to do to overcome that is really sell opportunities in specific gaps, in specific leakage, you know, really to kind of sell that you can capture a lot of things here that you can't, there's less competition than there is in Yuma. And then the other thing that we're trying to do is really just get on their radar. You know, it's, it's great to have national brands say, hey, we can come back to this conversation, and we'll look at this in 2021, 2022. Typically, if retailers and restaurants or grocery stores aren't interested in the community, they really won't give you the time of day. So they'll typically say, hey, no, thank you, we're not interested in the market. So that's really good. It, it sounds bad, it's a challenge, it's certainly something that we have to overcome while we're out there trying to bring in retailers and restaurants. But the, the feedback, the kind of silver lining there is that they are interested in the market as a potential future opportunity, maybe a couple of years down the road, which I think is a great sign. And, you know, as a city, from a strategic planning perspective, I think that helps with planning, certainly as you're looking at how the community develops, how you build out certain pieces of kind of strategic growth in the city. out certain pieces of kind of strategic growth in the city. That second quote there, just to kind of reiterate that is from another grocery store, smaller specialty grocery store. It says, our plans for now don't call for a store in Somerton because the market size isn't quite where we need it to be yet, but we'll be looking at the Yuma area in the next few years. So that again is kind of that same, hey, they're just on the bubble, they're not quite there yet, but we're planning on coming back to this market. So I think even though that's not a great thing that we didn't get them here today, we're doing what we can to really lay the framework to see what that looks like. And most of the time, I know Hector's seen this as well in this industry, if a retailer or restaurant tells you that they may come in two years, sometimes that can be three or four years, but sometimes it can also work the other direction where they say, hey, we might be there in two years. And then all of a sudden, a year down the road, they've actually started the process to get there, or maybe it's eighteen months, or maybe they actually come in eight months. So a no today can very quickly turn into a yes tomorrow. So I think there's, there's a lot of opportunity in that, even though that that sounds bad or seems like a huge obstacle. Recommendations that we think the city should look at in terms of really trying to overcome that, and you're doing a great job on these. Don't, don't read this as something that we're saying that the city's not doing, I think you are doing a great job of this, but really prioritizing new residential development and work with landowners to encourage development of new subdivisions. That's where I think you're going to, you're going to make a lot of ground fast is if you can really push residential development in, as weird as it sounds, because you don't want to constantly be in the shadow of other larger communities, but I would continue to develop as a residential hub for the region and really focus in and, you know, kind of sell the fact that you are a bedroom community for the Yuma MSA. And over time, that population base and that density will lead to some of those other opportunities that are just on the fringe right now. So I think you're doing a great job of that as a city, but those are some things that that we would kind of double down on and really make sure are part of that strategic focus. The second point there is just the proximity to Yuma and the potential of cannibalization of current store sales. So the other main factor that we've gotten as feedback when retailers or restaurants or developers have told us they're not interested in specific sites in Somerton has been that they've got a presence in the Yuma market and they're not fully convinced that the overall MSA or the overall market is big enough to support multiple locations. And so that's again, not necessarily a bad thing, because it says that there's opportunity as the market continues to expand and as the market as a whole continues to grow, that you're really next up in line, right? There's opportunities, the retailers and restaurants and developers are looking at Somerton, you know, they have the data, we're helping really sell as many sites as we can to try to get interest in it. But they, they see this as a growth market, which is a good sign. A lot of times in communities similar to yours, we'll see where they, they kind of get left behind, or there's two larger communities that they're sandwiched between and they become what we call a tweener, which is an in-betweener community. So people always kind of think of that as a community that's in between these two larger communities, there's not really opportunity. So I think you're in a good position where you're, you're not really in a threat position to become that. I think you really are that next stop up, especially as just the Yuma MSA starts to grow and continue to expand. Any, any questions on that council before I move to our, our last slide? Nope, okay, I'll keep going then. On this last slide, so where do we go from here? I mentioned this a little bit earlier. We are voluntarily extending our contract through September. And really that's just to account for the impact that COVID had, especially in the Southwest, just on retailers' expansion plans and their delays to new store growth. We, we didn't feel like we would be a good partner to the city if we didn't account for that. So, you know, we're just as a sign of good faith, we're continuing our contract through the end of September. We're continually to actively communicate with retailers and restaurants and we're reviewing the Somerton market and available sites in the city. So we're going to keep pushing those sites and opportunities to those retailers and restaurants we've been communicating with, make sure that we're still on their radar and just as their expansion plans or their thoughts and views of what the coming year looks like changes, that we're there if there's an opportunity for them to add a new location. We're working with developers to recruit for new developments in the city, primarily the development adjacent to New School. So Hector's made some introductions and we're going to work with those developers to see if we can help try to recruit some, some retail and grocery and different components over to some of those newer exciting developments. We're continuing to set up phone calls and meetings with potential retail and restaurant prospects. A lot of that happens online and kind of behind the scenes, but we're ultimately gearing up for that large International Council of Shopping Centers conference in Las Vegas in December. So that one that's typically in May every year was pushed back to December and we're having meetings and really doing what we can today to get retailers in the community and where there's opportunities or we have those retailers that say, hey, they're not quite there yet. We're working on setting up some meetings with them in Las Vegas in December where we can hopefully catch them looking at twenty twenty two and beyond and really getting on their, their expansion plan. We're continuing to expand our prospect list in our pipeline. So we're adding new retailers and restaurants to the mix as we're getting feedback. And then I just mentioned this one, but we're, we're setting up those meetings for the large ICSC event in Las Vegas. And we typically start that in September and October, but this year we'll probably start towards the end of summer, just as we're starting to ramp up and people are getting excited for that in December. So that's, that's really where we're at, we feel good about it, we've got a lot of positive momentum. I really do feel like we've, we've kind of turned the corner on COVID. We're hearing a lot of really good things from retailers and there's a lot of, a lot of positive momentum. So happy to be here to update you and happy to answer any questions that you might have. And I know the, the agenda's a little tight tonight, so if you need to, Hector's got my cell phone and email address and happy to follow up with anyone after the meeting as well or throughout the week.
Thank you, Austin. Vice Mayor.
I have, I have a question, Austin. Does Hector, does Hector have the customized marketing materials and the demographic data that has been presented to the potential retailers?
Yes, we do.
We have it?
I believe so. If, if not, we can reshare the link, but we have a, we have a dashboard where you guys can download all those reports and data.
So really just looking at all, at your presentation right now that you, that this update that you provided us, we're really, you know, from when we started to now, we're really nowhere close to landing a grocery store. Because I, I mean, looking at the feedback that was provided from real, from our retailers here that are stated here, I mean, I think this is something that, you know, we here in council, I think this, this is a new to us. You know, I knew that this is a challenging, but we're, we're still kind of like in the same, same spot, right?
Not necessarily. We've had some really good conversations with some of the larger grocery chains, particularly the one that we have quoted there. I think there's a lot of those larger national brands that, that hadn't looked as closely at the market, that I think we've been able to kind of pull their timeline in and have them more seriously consider this as a two to three year market and not a five to six to ten year market. We also have a call scheduled next week with a more regional grocery chain that's interested in a couple of sites in town. So we feel pretty good about that. We think there's some, some real opportunity with a larger regional grocery chain that may have some interest in some developable sites that are being worked on right now.
Yes, this Councilman Gonzalez. You know, just the, where do we go from here? I probably heard it about five, six times already. And it's pretty much, and I agree with the vice mayor, you know, until we have the population, and I think when, and when he reports or somebody gave us a report that when we hit, we hit the thirty five thousand population, that's where we're going to get a grocery store. We're still about ten years from there, from, from where we are now, probably hope is less. But again, I don't think, we're not really moving fast enough because of the same concern that I just explained. So, you know, I do appreciate what you guys are doing and work as hard as you can, but now where do we go from here? It's pretty much, I probably, you probably come back with another report in two weeks, months or a month, and it's going to probably be the same thing. You know, until we have that population, we're going to start moving forward, but that's my only personal belief. So I hope it gets better, but realistically speaking, we, I gotta be honest, you know, and something has to be done. And I know, you know, we gotta, you guys are talking with developers and stuff like that, but it's way too slow of a process and I know it takes some time. But Hector and I have talked about this issue for, for the last six, seven years. But again, I hope it moves a little bit faster, so.
Other questions, comments?
Just to reply real quick if I can. I agree with you. Our, our, our process is, is pretty arduous and that's typically how retail recruitment works. We always like to say that retail recruitment is, it's a process, not an event. You know, we have to have these conversations and meetings with retailers and restaurants to really convince them that there's opportunity in market. A lot of it is timing, a lot of it does have to do with, you know, certain phases of community growth, but we're having a lot of really good conversations with people outside of just that grocery space. We're having some good conversations with restaurants, with franchisees and with some, some real opportunities that I think will help get some of those retailers and restaurants that are going to help keep building that momentum and help make that, that growth happen faster. It's kind of like Domino's, once you start to get, to get one, you get another, you get another. And I think there's a few of those opportunities that we'll probably see realize sooner than later. So there, there are some, some actual opportunities on the table. I don't want it to feel like we're just coming back saying, hey, we're trying and we're talking and they, they still think you're too small. That is, that is happening for certain retailers, a lot of those are some of the larger national guys that, you know, our goal is to just really rein them in and say, how do we get them here in a year or two years instead of five years? And I think we're, we're doing a good job of making progress on that. That is frustratingly slow from this end as well, but there are a lot of other opportunities that we're working on right now as well, that I think we, we have a real opportunity to get new businesses, new restaurants, new franchisees into town. So that's, that's really our focus over this next three to four months is what can we do in the short term to actually have a tangible impact and get those retailers to the market while we're also helping force some of that strategic growth and not spending too much time focusing on the retailers that, that are focused on us not quite being there yet. So we are trying to balance that and make sure that, that we're doing a lot of that valuable stuff and moving as quickly as we can with some of those real opportunities as well.
Thank you, Austin. I'd like to make a comment. Austin already mentioned, but we have a big demand right now for housing. We had a demand, but the supply is lacking in Somerton. So something that from outside in the city side, we're trying to do, as Austin mentioned, is to continue incentivizing or working with housing developers to come to Somerton. Because we know the housing demand is here, it's just we don't have a supply. You know, Carmen is working with some existing developers, but it's going to be two years, it's going to be gone. All those lots that we have is going to be gone. So we need to actually continue working with housing developers to bring that kind of market, more population, more income. And that's something that we can do internally as a city. And Austin mentioned, but we know that, but we need to continue working with developers as well.
Thank you, Mayor Council, appreciate your time.
Thank you. We have another presentation, discussion on after hours shut, shut off, turn on water service for delinquent accounts.
Mayor, council, a couple of weeks ago, I did receive a call from one of the council members regarding this issue. So I went back and looked at what our neighbor municipalities have done in terms of after hours, turn on water. Normally right now for the city of Somerton, there is no ordinance or any resolution in terms of, or fees rather, having to turn on water after hours after they pay. Mostly by four fifty nine, if they, if they don't pay, then obviously as far as utilities are concerned, if they don't pay, then we won't go there and turn on the water until after the following, the following day. Some of them may pay until six o'clock, seven o'clock or eight o'clock when they get home. So that's, that's an issue we're having right now. So we looked at the city of Yuma. And what the city of Yuma does as far as the delinquent fees for, to turn on the water during work hours is fifty dollars, we have city of San Luis is thirty, and we have forty. For the liquid fees for, to turn on the water after hours, after five o'clock, it's a city of Yuma does a hundred dollars, city of San Luis does, they don't charge. And city of Somerton, obviously we don't charge, but when you look at the timeframes to turn on the water, the difference is city of Yuma and San Luis, they have twenty four hour shifts, so they're actually on call or on duty at those times. Somerton, it's only from eight to five. So is there any on-call access to account? Usually they don't have any access other than calling and making sure that those are turned on. As you can see, the salary of a field representative to go and turn on water, those are it right there. And you can see the twenty two, eighteen and seventeen. And then the hours of pay are for two hours of minimum time, one hour for city of San Luis and we is, city of Somerton has only the timeframe, they clock in and clock out. So what we're trying to change is if a resident or mainly the residents, and it only happens about maybe three times during the month, and that's after obviously two months of being delinquent, having either a fee, another additional fee of forty dollars to turn on the water after hours, which would be a total of eighty dollars. And the person would have access to the account and or the police station where the police may have access to the account so they can let us know. Normally, if we do this, that person will probably continue working from after five o'clock to maybe eight or nine o'clock in, in the evening to turn those accounts on. This is just for the discussion at this point, we need some guidance from you in terms of what would you want to see in the future? Because if it does take place, it'll take six, six days after we pass that ordinance.
So what, what staff recommendation, because I know it was discussed with staff? Do you have a recommendation on how to address this issue?
Yes, we were recommending to charge an additional forty dollars after, after hours. And, and up to, I believe was nine o'clock PM, eight or nine PM.
I like to, I like the San Luis plan, I mean, it's.
Yeah, the biggest difference is they're, they're twenty four hours, so we would have to pay a staff member twenty four hours.
I don't like the San Luis plan because they don't charge anything to go connect.
I mean, yeah, I'm talking about the, the, where's this notes, the resident will call the police department. I don't mind that, I, you know, I'm just thinking about a big family, especially when they're going to school, it's school time and something happens, you know, if one of the parents forget to pay the water bill, then they have five, six, seven kids, they gotta take a shower, you know, et cetera. And not only that, but elderly people as well. So I think personally, I will leave it up to you, either to charge them or not, that the forty extra dollars, you know, it all depends case by case. But my recommendation is kind of play by ear and if it's like someone that is, especially with the pandemic thing, but we have to have something, you know, some kind of horns to be able to follow that same pattern with everybody else, but.
Even though it sounds like a great idea, I think we just have to be equitable across the board.
Yes.
You know, some, some of these delinquencies, obviously they're two months out already, they're already late two months. And that's why they get shut off. They don't, they don't get shut off after one month, it's after the second month and then plus ten days.
Mayor, I have a comment.
Yes.
If it's feasible for staff, then I would say proceed with it, but we also need to keep in mind, just like Councilman Gonzalez said, you know, there might be families out there, but we also have employees with families that, that need, they need to tend their, their families and having people on call is already difficult as it is. I mean, we've, we've never really had a need, so at least not that I know of. So I mean, I don't see why we should change unless there's, there's actually a need out there. And that's when I feel that we need to adjust. But if it was one or two, two families, you know, it's, I'm sorry, they're, they're in a bad situation, but it got turned off for failure, failure of payment. As far as COVID's concerned, there's, there's all type of assistance. We even did a program ourselves to, to help pay some of these arrears. WACOG had a program similar to that. So, so there is. So so there is programs out out there. So again, you know, if it's a burden on staff, then I tend tend to say, I I would tend to say no, you know, as far as a fire department turning it on and off. They got, I think they have other other priorities than than to just go turn off a valve on or off.
The the fire department doesn't get called. It's the police department, which will notify whoever's on on call to make to turn that water on. But, you know, it's, I went back to look at so many, how many times it has happened. Happened maybe twice. But the issue is, it's only it only has happened twice because when they pay after hours, they have no one to call. So they'll come in the following day and, or actually, we'll pull the list out and then turn on the water the following morning. Essentially, they'll be out without water for approximately twelve hours or more. So that's that's kind of issue. We don't have any any information other than we don't turn on the water for those accounts until the following day. So that's why we don't have much information other than those folks that pay the following day or that evening. That's when their water gets turned on.
Yeah, and and I feel we gotta have a policy because, you know, this is they call a council member, the council member called an employee and we put employees at a bad place when a when a council member calls and starts giving directions. So we have a policy in place and 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 not leave it to staff. So they know what to do. And and I feel that's probably the best way going forward. Because although it happens two or three times, like you say, but at least they're not calling people, everybody, and the mayor, you know, what do we do? So it's council member calling staff. That's that's not the way to to do business. So at least if we have a policy, the staff is not going to feel pressure when they get a council member calling.
And I was the one to call.
But I will we'll bring him back on our next council meeting for for those changes and fees. And then it'll it'll move forward if Mayor and Council approve those changes. Like I said, it doesn't happen. It, I'm sure it's going to happen more often than none now that there is a fee and people can have their water turned on at eight o'clock at night.
Moving on to old business. Discussion on possible action to approve second reading by title only of ordinance number twenty twenty-one zero zero three and ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Somerton amending the Somerton city code, Article two seven one, City of Somerton zoning and subdivision ordinance by amending section. It was saying that I I jumped to some agenda, but it wasn't. You and the rest. Okay, I'm gonna start from the beginning. Item eight, item one, discussion on possible action to approve second reading by title only of ordinance number twenty twenty-one zero zero three and ordinance of the mayor and city of Somerton amending the Somerton city code, Article two seven one, City of Somerton zoning and subdivision ordinance by amending section three point one point five M medical marijuana dispensary cultivation site and replacing it with a new section entitled section three point one point five medical marijuana marijuana establishment cultivation and testing facilities. Amending tables of allowed uses, amending the Somerton infield set of overlay overlay plan, entertainment district table of uses, amending Article ten one nineteen reserved, establishing Article eight two four retail sales for marijuana and marijuana products, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances and providing for severability. Trouble with that word.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council, Carmen Juarez, Community Development Department. And this is the final, final, final step in the process of a large text amendment that includes and addresses the American marijuana and marijuana establishment. I came before you last at the last meeting and we did the presentation, we discussed it. And council requested us to go back and make a couple of changes to this ordinance, which we already did. And this is the revised version of it. So we have made changes to the section ten point one point nineteen point C two of the city code, the one that pertains to the dust, fumes, or odors in the residential area. We removed that one and we also made the change to section three one five M four B of the zoning code, removing the one hundred foot distance requirement between a marijuana dispensary and a restaurant or bar dispensing alcohol in the main street corridor and the infield incentive overlay entertainment district. So at this time, we have revised the ordinance and we are before you asking if you have any questions. If not, we would like to have a second reading of this ordinance motion.
Questions, comments? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the second reading by title only of ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero zero three.
So motion by Vice Mayor Castillo.
Second, man.
Second by Councilmember Galindo, house in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero zero three, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Somerton amending the Somerton city code, Article two seven one, City of Somerton zoning and subdivision ordinance by amending section three one five M medical marijuana dispensary cultivation site and replacing it with a new section entitled section three one five M medical marijuana marijuana establishment cultivation and testing facilities. Also amending tables of allowed uses, amending the Somerton infield incentive overlay plan, entertainment district table of uses, amending Article ten one nineteen reserved, establishing Article eight two four retail sales for marijuana and marijuana products, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances and providing for severability.
There are motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-one zero zero three.
Some of there.
So motion by Councilman Galindo.
Second.
Second by Councilman Roldan. House in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Yes, I have another. The the next item is the second part of the ordinance.
I don't have the second page for the agenda. Maybe I lost it. Item number two, discussion on possible action to approve second reading by title only of ordinance number twenty twenty-one zero zero four and ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Somerton amending the Somerton city code, Article two seven one, City of Somerton zoning and subdivision ordinance by amending section three point one point four D schools, public or private boarding, college or university by removing subsections three point one point four D two and three point one point four D three and amending section three point two point six J swimming pools by adding an exception providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances and providing for severability.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, this is the second part of the text amendment. Because of the size of the text amendment, staff decided to split it into the previous ordinance that you just passed and this one. This one only includes the location of the schools and the swimming pool regulations. On this one, council at the last meeting didn't make any changes, so this is exactly as the one that we presented at the last time. If you have any questions for me, if not, I would like to ask for a second reading motion, please.
Any questions, comments? Is there a motion to approve second read by title only of ordinance number twenty twenty-one zero zero four?
Some of there.
There's a motion by Councilman Gonzalez.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Castillo, house in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero zero four, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Somerton amending the Somerton city code, Article two seven one, City of Somerton zoning and subdivision ordinance by amending section three one four D schools, public or private boarding, college or university by removing subsections three one four D two and three one four D three and amending section three two six J swimming pools by adding an exception providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances and providing for severability.
There are motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-one zero zero four.
Some of there.
So motion by Councilman Galindo.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Castillo, house in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business, discussion on possible action on any and all matters regarding the placement of the welcome to Somerton sign provided by Kofa High School welding program.
We have two locations to put the welcome to Somerton sign. One is on County seventeen and Somerton Avenue and or County fifteen or Madison and Somerton Avenue. There's two locations that we're looking at. One on the pathway, which is on Somerton Avenue and County seventeen. There's a new pathway that has been, was not completed yet. We still need lighting. There is drip system in place as well from from the retention basins in that area. Or the entrance from the north coming into into Somerton on Madison and Somerton Avenue. So there is two locations that we need guidance from mayor and councils to that location.
Which locations?
It'll be up to you to to Mayor and Council to decide which location, either in County seventeen and Somerton Avenue or County fifteen and Somerton Avenue.
But the the staff had a proposal, speak up, proposal, staff.
No, they they don't mind either or.
They don't mind either or?
Yes.
For visibility purposes, I think and and Somerton Avenue, I'm just thinking because over here on County seventeen and Somerton on the pathway, there's the the canal railing that I think for visibility purposes, it would block it. And, you know, over here is a is a little bit more open space and visible.
The the only thing on on County fifteen and Madison is there's we might not be able to 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 do any passkeeping until we get that drip system going because it's kind of in the corner area. But still a great location, either or, that or the south, south end.
I I agree with Councilwoman Garcia. I like the fact that coming from the north side, you know, they'll they'll be entering and they'll see our water tower. So I I kind of like that location for that reason. You know, they'll see our sign and then, you know, a couple minutes more, they'll see our water towers.
To decide the option one or two or what to.
I like option two.
I like option two.
Me too.
Yeah, where the location where.
Yeah, with with.
I do agree with the rest of the council that the only thing I, is there any time, probably in the near future, that we will be placing a sign at the main entrance coming from the highway? Because originally, that was part of the plan.
Yes, I spoke with Saul. He's going to actually have a design for mayor and council to make a decision on those drawings, conceptual drawings. And then from there, he'll actually do the 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 actual design and then we'll send it to Kofa for the students to make.
So we'll have two welcome signs?
Well, actually, we'll end up having four after all is said and done. We'll have the northeast, west, and south.
Southwest.
Four cardinal points. North side and option two?
Need a motion for this?
Yes.
entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, to install the welcome sign in the north part of town provided by the Kofa High School welding program.
So motion by Councilman Gonzalez. Second by Councilwoman Garcia, house in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Action carries. Item number three, discussion on possible action to award the lowest responsible bidder for the Somerton High School sewer lift station improvement project. Welcome, Cesar. Haven't seen him in in a year.
I'll go back to it.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. The item before before you is a discussion and possible consideration to award the lowest responsible bidder for the Somerton High School sewer lift station improvement project. An invitation to bid for the construction of the above-mentioned project was advertised in the Yuma Daily Sun. The design work and specifications were prepared by James Xavier and Associates. The project involves the construction of a new sewer lift station, new ten-inch gravity sewer main, new ten-inch sewer force main, and a new twenty-four feet wide asphalt access roadway from Main Street to the new proposed lift station on Jefferson. Currently, on Thursday, May twenty-seven, we opened three sealed bids for the above referenced project. We revised and analyzed some middles, and as you can see, the the results are attached in the bid evaluation record. The lowest bidder was Yuma Valley Contractors with a base bid amount of two million one hundred sixty-four thousand eight hundred seventy-four dollars and ninety-two cents. This amount includes a hundred and three thousand eighty-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents for contingency. The engineer's cost estimate, it was one point three million. And as you as you know, the WIFL loan amount is one million nine hundred fifty thousand and four dollars for this project. Mayor, Council, do you have any questions?
Questions, comments?
Mayor, I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Bielpano.
Sam, from from this particular project, we have a one point nine, you said, from WIFL, WIFL loan. How are we going to pay it back?
This is going to be part of the sewer impact fees that we are going to propose. We have a teacher advisor working on those on the study right now. And we're going to include the full amount of this project on those fees.
Okay, so when when is that going to be accomplished?
I will need to go and ask our consultant when it's going to be completed, but it's going to be coming pretty soon. Maybe in the next two, three months. Just for information, this, the this WIFL loans includes five hundred thousand in forgiveness.
Okay, so we're really on the hook for one point four. Like a little bit over one point four million. Because they forgive five hundred thousand, that leaves me with one point four. My my concern is, how are we going to pay for they pay for this strictly just of from impact fees?
Well, basically, if we have a one point nine, actually, this and the difference between the two point million, it's a hundred and eleven thousand. So uh if we remove the contingency that hopefully uh we're gonna be able to use, we're gonna be uh in the hook for uh one thousand and eleven thousand. I mean, one hundred and eleven thousand.
So what's the total total cost of the project?
Two million and two million?
Two point one.
Uh, twelve, two point one.
Two point one, so five hundred is uh.
That's forgiveness.
Forgivable to one point six, roughly. One point six million is what we're gonna be on the hook hook for. We we're gonna have to come up with a funding from somewhere to pay pay for this because of the impact fees are, I mean, we were what, we're we're gonna start a, impact fees will probably take a long time before we they start accumulating.
Uh, it's not only the impact fees, uh Councilmember Abiabando, it's also the development fees are gonna assist paying for this. This is the the WIFL loan resolution that uh happened several months ago.
No, yeah, well, I'm I'm fully aware of that because uh our, I remember us having a work session and we kicked the idea around of uh doing a benefit area, was that ever considered? Was was it even looked into?
Yes, we did look into the whole area, uh the problem that we had, not everybody was gonna sign off on it. So what we're doing is uh the impact fees will pay for the for the north portion of it and development fees will end up paying from the south.
So none of this will be paid by 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 the ratepayers, correct?
Only new ones.
Only only the new ones, correct?
Okay.
Yes, basically, uh this area is gonna be paid by those uh commercial or any new development between Main Street to County fifteen and between the main drain and Cesar Chavez.
Yeah, but pe- people that that are that have an account, let's say it's residential area, and they develop and or they they get an account with the city, they're not gonna be paying for for this, correct?
No, it's just new new um new development.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, may I? Uh, I want to recommend for City Council to award the bid to Yuma Valley Contractors in the base bid amount of two million one hundred sixty sixty four thousand eight hundred seventy four dollars and ninety two cents.
There a motion? A motion with Councilman Galindo. Second. Second by Councilwoman Garcia, House in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Going back to item number two, discussion of possible action to approve resolution number twenty twenty one zero zero seven, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Somerton, Arizona, designating the Chief Fiscal Officer for Officially submitting the Fiscal Year twenty twenty one expenditure limitation report to the Arizona Auditor General.
Sadia, you're are you on the phone?
Yes, I am, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. The resolution before you is a resolution that we pass each year in order to um for me to submit the um the expended uh the annual expenditure limitation report, this is submitted to the Auditor General prior to uh July thirty first of each year. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions, comments? There a motion? Motion by Councilwoman Garcia.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gonzalez, House in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Discussion of possible action to approve the sale of city property located at four oh four West Spring Street and R three zoning residential lot approximately six thousand eight hundred ninety one and point oh eight square feet and a request for proposals submitted by Francisco and Alma Nidia Gonzalez.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers, uh you know, this uh uh City Council directors staff to sell some residential properties and this property on four oh four uh West Spring uh right now is an existing parking lot by the city. And we have a a proposal, a submission, RFP, on June on June fifth by Francisco and Alma Nidia Gonzalez. And they they live next to the property, so their intent is to buy the property and 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 build a new home on that corner. The city didn't appraise so and the appraisal came out to forty five thousand dollars with a property. And the the applicant is also proposing to pay forty five thousand dollars for that parcel. And um as part of the um discussion that we have with them, uh because it was an existing parking lot, uh it's a existing payment on that parcel. And Polyworks agreed to remove, remove the uh the existing payment and also in a in a storm drain pipe as part of the uh the sale. But yes, the uh the applicant is proposing to pay forty five thousand dollars as City Council Director staff to publish these uh uh properties for sale. And we got only one one proposal the last the last two months. At this at this time, my mayor and council, I'd like you to motion to uh approve the RFP uh for the four oh four West Spring Street parcel number seven forty three sixty two, one one sixteen, and direct staff to work on a City Council resolution for the sale and the details of the closing of this property for forty five thousand dollars. We still need to come back uh to bring before you a resolution of sale.
I have a question here. You say that the uh Parks and Rec agreed to remove the asphalt or the concrete out of there was. Polyworks.
Yeah, Polyworks.
What is the reason behind that?
Uh, we 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 discussed it, it hasn't, obviously it has to come from mayor and council for us to do it, but it hasn't been approved yet.
And that's why I'm asking, why does the city have to?
We don't, I mean.
Yeah, that's that's part of the recommendation, but I mean, it would be up to City Council to say sell for forty five thousand dollars, but who's gonna be removing that? Is the new owner or the city because it's an existing parking lot?
Was that included in the appraisal?
No, the appraisal came out including the payment and the.
As is?
Yes, as is.
This the, excuse me, Mayor and Council, um we still, we do still need to cap no matter what, there's a drainage going from um east to west, we still need to cap it right off the the street on our easement, we need to cap that area because there's a drainage in there.
So you still need to, okay.
Yeah, we still need to cap it no matter what. So there'll be a removal of some of the um the pipe in there, some of the drainage.
Yeah, but that's only unfortunate, just a little, it's not the whole property asphalt, I don't know.
Should we table this until we get more information?
Mayor, I have a comment.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilman.
Okay, cuz um I don't know how much value that that parking lot added to to the to the to the appraisal, sorry, I lost my word for a second. So i- if it's removed, it's probably gonna lose a little bit of little bit of value. So I think it's pretty much, pretty much a wash, you know? Whether we pay somebody or they pay somebody, it's still is still gonna lose a little bit of of uh of value and they're willing to pay the forty five. And that's what one thing that we've always said, you know, hey, you know what? We wanna get get uh the the value. So I mean, if it's not an inconvenience for 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 public works, then I say we we go ahead and and pro proceed with this. My only concern is is that when are they gonna develop it? Just like all of our properties, we've always asked that they develop it and not just sit on it.
I I kinda disagree with you, uh Mr. Abando, is we always have a concern with manpower in regards to Polyworks and have the city remove that, it's not gonna be a one day thing, it's gonna take some time. And we always complaining about, you know, with manpower because we are only limited on employees and you know, putting our staff to to remove that after we sell it, it it's, I don't know, to me that's.
We inconvenience them with with requests to turn on water late late at night. I mean, this is this is the, this is a forty plus thou- thousand dollar sale that that is being jeopardized. And then not to mention that it's an eyesore.
Galindo.
I think we should table this to the next meeting because obviously we have questions and and we don't have the answers right now, so I will recommend to table this.
Need a motion to table it or just table?
Yeah, we do need a motion just to table for next meeting.
Sub motion by Councilman Galindo.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Castillo, House in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And we're gonna discuss the la- last item in executive session. And uh so let's do summary of current events. And then we'll have a five minute break and then we're gonna convene into executive session.
Mayor, because one of the items is on the open, we would have to come back from E session to address that. Or you can table it or you can decide to do it or not?
Yeah.
Um COVID nineteen early warning continues to be at level of concern one. It was decreased from a week ago, um that actually was at a level two. That's good news, I think it happened across the the county, yeah, it increased and then made a huge drop. So that that's great news and it continues to to drop, hopefully it doesn't fluctuate that much. There has been a flat tax discussion, has been decreased from one point nine, still a conversation, uh possibly one point two, the discussion is still up in the air. I had a conversation with Representative Joel John today. Um, there's still in several discussions and several ideas of what's going to occur there. It's still up in the air, but at this point, uh Yuma Union High School district, the budget is still in there for that unless things change or a skinny budget is passed. Currently is, it's still in the budget. Chief Danda?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, the only updates I have for you, one is a of kind of interest, it's uh we've been having a couple brush fires on the levy and that's because uh illegal aliens are creating diversions or or also they may be drug runners, but they're lighting multiple fires and it's uh, of course, it impacts us because when we're out there fighting a fire, then we're not available for other other traffic. And so we can see the impacts that we have when uh the illegals or the the people that are moving drugs across the border uh do these kinds of things. Uh, the other thing is we've had an uptick in local accidents, which we hadn't had very many accidents lately and also we're having a a string of accidents again. And the third item is um I gave kudos in my weekly uh report to Battalion Chief uh Carlos, cuz he applied for uh the Emergency Response Fund money from Arizona Department of Emergency Management. Uh, they only made twelve thousand dollars available for the entire Yuma County and we got almost half of it. He got five thousand dollars in equipment for us, hazardous materials equipment. So he did an excellent job. And on top of that, they weren't able to get the equipment to us because of COVID and uh they're losing a lot of people at that office. And so he went to Phoenix and picked up the equipment for Welton, uh Yuma, ourselves and and San Luis and so uh that was a good thing for all, that's all I have, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. An update on the Cesar Chavez traffic signal and street reconstruction project. Uh APS crew completed the installation of the new poles uh on the intersection of Main Street and Cesar Chavez and the only pending item for APS is basically uh uh install the cable or wire on on the intersection in order for us to uh continue with the uh traffic signal poles. An update on the Fulton and Council project, uh new vertical curb and gutter has been installed in on all the road segments. We are planning to pave uh install the pavement on the next week or two. And an update on the twelve inch Valley Vista Water Extension Project. Uh, we did um the uh previous meeting last week and the bid opening is is this coming Thursday, so hopefully we can receive good numbers from the contractors. Thank you.
Comment director.
Just wanna update, Mayor, for the IDA, industrial development authority, we have only one board member. Aracely Rodriguez resigned from the board and now we don't have a quorum to to set meetings. You know anyone from the community to like to apply for to be a board member of the IDA? Please uh let let us know. Uh, anyone in the audience interested on the IDA board as well? We need at least three uh three uh board members, Mayor, thank you.
Carmen Juarez.
Community Development.
Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council, an update on the um the uh update actually of the development fee um study. We have teacher advisor consulting firm, the city has hired this consulting firm to review the um development impact fees currently are being charged for uh wastewater, public safety and streets. So the first public hearing with council to review and potentially approve the land use assumption and infrastructure improvement plan um was scheduled for July seventh, it it has been rescheduled for August third. So um it was one of the questions earlier during the meeting and how soon we're going to be finalizing this this item, this this process. So that that will be the first item, we need to uh have council to approve this document in order to come back with the public hearing for the actual fees for for this for for this item. So um in in time terms, it might be probably pretty close to the end of the year by the time we finish with this update. Um, another another note, the Building Safety Division has initiated summer hours, beginning inspections at five AM and finalizing at around two PM. Um, trying to work with the uh the construction companies when they're out there before the um the very, very hot hours of the day. So from effective this week until the end of September, we are going to be working from five AM to two PM on the building safety side. And Animal Control Division is reminding all the pet owners to maintain water shade and um hopefully they can bring their animals in, their pets inside of the house because this weekend from now on until the end of September, we're gonna be seeing these really, really high temperatures and and our pets are very important to us and we need to take care of them. That's all we have.
Thank you, Carmen, um Chief Juarez.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I have a couple of things, um our officers participated in the Memorial Weekend uh enforcement with the Yuma County Officers as well, the local agencies. This week, our communication specialist Kate Lopez was recognized as her peak performer for the Somerton Police Department in a meeting that they had in the county or at Yuma Police Department that was intended for dispatchers. Our building was clean this morning, it was a surprise to us this morning to see a a crew of staff cleaning our building out there. I just wanna thank uh the organizers, I believe it was Parks and Rec, Rodney and Jesus, so thank you very much. It got a little dusty out there, but it and it was hot too, so we felt real bad for the people that were out there, but um it needed some cleaning done, so thank you, Jesus and Rodney who organized that. Uh, we're also looking um to continue to apply for federal and state funding, so that's all I have this evening, thank you.
Jesus Mesa, Parks and Rec.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor. Just wanna mention that the striping project for the court was completed today. Came out pretty nice. Came out pretty nice, so we're going to have the amenities now for basketball and volleyball and it's going to be a multi-use court. Also for the pool, we're going to reopen tomorrow. We had a maintenance concern, so we had to close due to safety, but it's going to reopen tomorrow for regular activities. Also for recreation, we hosted a team building wellness activity for the employees. We had a very good turnout on Friday on fourteen, so a lot of employees showed up and they had a good time. Just want to mention on a note, not too positive, but it's part of, of the job. Mr. Joshua Segura resigned yesterday, our recreation coordinator. We're actively seeking a new coordinator as of today and that's all I have.
Sarina, Finance Director.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. This week, we're meeting with all kiosks to officially have our kickoff meeting for getting the kiosk set up outside. Hopefully we'll, I'll have a better, a better update for you next week or the following, oh, by the end of the week. And I am, we are working on the budget, hopefully we can have that too by, by the end of the day tomorrow. So we can post the agenda for that. We got all our numbers together last week and we're working diligently to get that, that together. We're also preparing for the shut offs next week. We still have a couple of, of customers that are on the shut off list, so I mean, I'm sorry, on the lock list, so we're still struggling with that. And that's all I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. That concludes.
Councilman Roldán, do you have anything?
Just want to thank Parks and Recreation Department, Mr. Mesa, Mr. Rodney and, and Mr. Segura. There was the state tournament for the eleven year and Yuma was asked to, if they wanted it and, and they said no. So then I, I got a call from the State Commissioner. So I contacted Jerry and then I come, I contacted Mr. Mesa and, and they pulled it together. And our, the team, the Somerton Mets beat up Scottsdale in two games, so now we're, we're qualifying for the, we're representing Arizona at the, in Haver, California for the, for the regional tournament for the eleven year. So I want to thank them for, for putting all this together. It's sad that Josh is leaving, you, you know. Hope, you know, I don't know if there's anything that we can do or Mr. Mesa can do, but I mean, they did pretty good in that, so I just want to thank them for, for putting all that in, you know, in a small amount of time and, and put it together and get it going. We, we had a, the commissioner here, first time he's been in Somerton. And, and they like it, they like the field, they like everything and I, I, I think it was, it was a good thing put together, so, so thank you for that. That's all I have, man.
Councilman Bialpando? Bialpando? Is the Dodger game on? Yeah.
Dodgers are losing.
Councilwoman Garcia?
Just want to update everybody that in the eight five three five oh zip code, we have a total of twenty four thousand, seven hundred and fifty residents vaccinated. We're still working with the Health Department to set up some back to school vaccinations for those kids that couldn't come to the events that we held in conjunction, in conjunction with San Luis, Arizona. And I know it's been hard for fire staffing wise, but we really appreciate your help. And today I attended Elder Abuse Awareness Day in, here at the Senior Center. Seniors are very excited to be back and, and, and it shows, but we weren't able to do the balloons because of the heat, but they enjoyed their cupcakes, so it went well.
Councilman Gonzalez?
I don't have anything.
Councilman Galindo?
Two weeks ago I asked about the lights in the park. Are you guys working on maybe trying to put the lights on every day? Remember two weeks ago I asked for them?
Yesterday.
So you know, you guys, you guys were going to locate the casilloid and pump it in the morning.
Okay, we, we'll give you information in regards to, most of the time they're, they're on. At least the field lights, they've been on, we can't control Joe, well, we can control a little bit of the Renaultso field.
Maybe the council.
Okay, Council Park. We'll give you the electricity bills to see how much that would be. We'll make that data.
Demolish the parking lot and maybe we can save some money.
Vice Mayor?
Just, you know. You know, happy to see that, you know, you guys had a team building activity playing kickball. You know, wasn't able to make it, you know. I arrived that day when I was out of town, so I did see some pictures, so I do want to thank everyone that was involved in it. You know, I think that, you know, that brings some sort of unity and, and gives all staff an opportunity to really, you know, mingle outside of working hours, you know, so I, I mean, whoever's organizing that, I want to, you know, thank them for that. And hopefully on the next eve, next, next time we do that, give us enough notice so that you can make it. Then I can make it, so that's all I have.
I don't, I don't have anything today. So we're going to take a five minute break and then go into executive session. Okay.